Welcome, I'd like to call this April 11th, 2016 council meeting to order. If you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Coin.
Here.
Hilberg.
Here.
Colossar.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Reading of the minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting on March 28, 2016 is prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second. Discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colossar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields. Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Motion passes, 7-0.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee met prior to council and will meet prior to the next council meeting. Health, Safety and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Colossar?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to report and there is no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and no report this evening.
Thank you. Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and nothing to report.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Streets and Sidewalks will hold a meeting here next Monday night, the 18th, at 5:30 PM.
Thank you. Water and Utilities Committee, Mr. Hilberg?
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, nothing to report.
And Emerging Technologies Committee, Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and nothing to report.
Thank you. A request for council action, we have several for the Finance Committee. We have 1651, General Liability Insurance Renewal for USI Insurance Services. 1652, Fiscal Year 2016 Chip Grant Application. 1653, Agreement with Delta Airport Consultants for Design and Bidding of the North-South Taxiway. 1654, The Bids for the Municipal Airport Rehabilitation of Transit Apron. 1655, The Bids for the Municipal Airport North-South Taxiway Reconstruction. 1656, Sam Macy Park Playground Surfacing, Repeal Ordinance 916. 1657, Amending Salaries and Benefit Code, Section 3102-9, The Cable TV. 1658, Resolution Request Public Service Recognition Week. 1659, Bids Only Memorial Park Pool and Pool House. 1660, Payment Over $3,000 to Osborne Medina. And 1661, Memorandum of Understanding of Medina County Transit. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamwell?
Thank you, Mr. President. There's a group called Working America that's going to be canvassing in the city. It started before the primaries and will likely go through November. It's a legislative political advocacy as well as educational canvassing of residential areas in our city and will last through the election cycle. They plan to canvas from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM on Monday through Friday and 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM on weekends. These activities are constitutionally protected under the First Amendment, do not require them to register for the city solicitor's permit or, for that matter, follow the solicitor regulations as they're not selling anything. Working America is a not-for-profit 501(c)(5) labor organization and they're affiliated with the AFL-CIO. Yesterday, Sunday, April 10th, there was a celebration at the hospital for LST. Councilman Simpson is one of the founding members, I believe, with LST. It's their 40th anniversary and the city's been blessed with the medical services of LST and our partnership with the hospital in providing that to our residents and visitors. I know Resolution 4916 is the last action of council tonight, but I just wanted to personally thank and congratulate Matt Weiderhold for leading Main Street Medina and building it to what it is today in the city. Our Charter Review Commission is going to meet. The Charter Review is made up of five members selected by council, five members selected by myself, and then those 10 members pick another five to make up the committee. Their next meeting is Monday, April 18th, a week from today, 5:30 at City Hall, and it'll be in the multipurpose room downstairs. The National Day of Prayer events are coming up again this year. It's Thursday, May 5th, and again, there'll be three events. The first is 7:00 AM, the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast at Williams on the Lake. The Speaker will be Superintendent Dave Knight from our City Schools. There are tickets for this. It's the only thing that there's a charge for, and they're $15 each for the breakfast to cover the Williams on the Lake and the breakfast. So, those are available at the mayor's office and a number of churches in town. Then there'll be a noon prayer service on the square with youth from both St. Francis and the Medina Christian Academy schools. In case of rain, the UCC Church will become the rain location, and that's from noon and will be over shortly before 1:00. And then 7:00 PM, there's an evening prayer service at the Church of the Nazarene, which is located at 6901 Worcester Pike Medina, and we invite anyone interested to attend one or all of those events. Last but not least, it's my pleasure to introduce Justin Harrison. He is here with his mother, Tracy Harrison, and he's going to talk to council about the upcoming Pinwheel Walk to bring awareness to child abuse this coming Saturday morning, April 16th. Justin?
I'm Justin Harrison. I'm Justin Harrison. My address is 1220 North Crescent, O'Brooke, Ohio, and good evening. Hi, my name is Snake. I'm 12 years old. One January a few years back, I was abused by my stepbrother. I was scared, lost, and confused. My mom got me into counseling and tried to find me a support group, but there were no groups around, so she put a message on social media. If anyone knew of a support group for kids that were abused, just so happened, one of my mom's friends sent her a message and told her about this group that he had just joined called BACA, Bikers Against Child Abuse. We got in contact with the child liaison, and she sent a meeting up for my mom and myself and a few members of, and a few members to come out to my house and talk to me. And my mom, there was Rebel Floppy, who I called Hulk Hogan, and Zook. I was afraid to talk to the guys. I sat by my mom. I didn't want to talk, yeah, I didn't want to talk. Then after 45 minutes of them being here, I started to try to trust one of the guys, which was Floppy. He came over to me and told me that I don't have to be afraid anymore. So, they talked to me for a while. Then, one of the members came outside with me and played catch. After about 20 minutes, they called me back and told me that they would call my mom and let her know when they would be back. Floppy also told me that they would never promise me anything. Before they finished, they had me pick a name that I would want for my bike name. I picked Snake. They left after about two hours. It was awesome to meet them all that day. They told me that I could call them anytime, day or night. It didn't matter what time it was, if I was scared or afraid, until I got my mentors. A couple weeks later, someone called my mom and told her my mentors would be Joker and Ginger, but I still could call any of them. But after getting to know them, I started to talk, but I still kept things inside. Then in September of 2013, my mom told me that we were going to a BACA picnic. At the picnic, I was surrounded by so many members of the group. There are too many to name, but for the first time, I felt safe. Then one of the guys started talking to me and presented me with a blanket, a teddy bear, and a vest. He told me I don't need to be afraid. He told me to be a kid. They all passed around the bear, filled it with hugs and some kisses. Ginger. I felt so special. I felt not afraid. It was a great day. The following spring, I got to have a bike ride on any one of the members' bikes. I wanted, I wanted the first bike. I picked was Yankee's, the only not Harley one. The next bike may be Floppy's or Yankee's new bike. This past summer, I got to go to Columbus to see all the members of the Ohio group. It was great to see them all. I also met some of the other kids in the group that I have kept in contact with. I also, I also go to meet Destiny. She is a little girl who has been through a lot. They're trying to pass a law. That law would be called Destiny's Law, which is crime against a child equals double jail time. Please pray that it passes once it is back in the house. The group is now the Warriors for the Children, which helps the children not to be afraid. It also teaches them to stand up to their bullies. This group has got me where I am today. If I were not, if it were not for them, I would still be scared of people and not want to share my story. I want to be able to help other kids that have been abused to open up and not keep it all inside. Keep it inside. Keeping it inside makes you sick and eats you up inside, which is not how you want to grow up. You need to, you need to fight for yourself. My mentors now are Ginger and Yankee. I think he's behind me. I love them all. They are all part of my family. I have more brothers and sisters than anyone. My dream is to someday become a warrior. Warriors for the Children rocks. If you would like to know more, let Ginger, Yankee, Slash, or Crash know. Thank you, Mom and Bill, for being my biggest supporters. Please join us April 16th, 2016, starting, starting with registration at 9:00 AM at Medina Square for the Pinwheel Walk. We will be planting 495 pinwheels, which is the amount of kids that were abused in 2015 in Medina County. There will also be a few speakers, the mayor, Dennis Hanwell, and Mike Pistorino. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durham, Director of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, an announcement for residents. All residents are required to file Medina City Income Tax Returns. If you haven't done that yet, you're running out of time. We have, we have paper forms here at City Hall. You can come get those. You can also get the forms online. The city does not collect a tax ourselves. We contract that out to Cleveland's Income Tax Agency, CCA, but you can find them on the web and find the forms there. Additionally, if you need help with those forms, we have one more opportunity here in the city of Medina to get help with that. That is Tuesday, April 12th, from 2:00 to 8:00, and that's at the REC Center at 855 Waymouth Road. There's nothing on the agenda tonight that came directly but from Finance, but the first item on the GoFundMe campaign, talked with Jansen and made sure that that would be a way that we could accept donations and work that out. And then finally, I would like to join the mayor and the council in this upcoming resolution in thanking Matt Weiderhold for his salesmanship of Medina and leadership of Medina Main Street. It's been great to work with you. I've had an opportunity to work with him a couple times in my position as president of the Government Finance Officers Association of Ohio. I've been able to get a couple of trainings hosted here in Medina, and Matt put together pamphlets and stuff for me to hand out. I always want to sell the town to people that we get in here, so I think he's done a great job with that.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, Law Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Chief Bear Ducci, Police Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to let council know that we've selected two patrolmen to go to the dare training this year, and the thought is to use them as combination school resource, dare instructors, and after hearing this young man, get them out in the community as mentors for kids. We've already planned to get them over at the REC Center, so maybe we get with this group and find a better way to do that in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. As I was just sitting here, I realized that today is my five-year anniversary with the city, and it got me thinking about my first day at work. There was, when I came in, there was a note on my chair from the mayor asking me to attend the Main Street Medina Business Development Committee. So, it's, I wanted to congratulate Matt on his new position as the Director of Northeast Ohio Diversity Center, which I'm sure he'll do a fabulous job, but obviously, I will miss him very much, so thank you, Matt, for everything.
Thank you. Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director?
Thank you. I would just like to join everyone with congratulating Matt on his moving on, but unfortunately for the community of Medina, we will not have him in such a critical role in the community. He's been a great asset in the two years I've been working with, at the city, working closely with Main Street as the city's representative on the board, so I would just congratulate him on the past successes and successes going forward, other than I have nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. This Wednesday, April 13th, will be the first sponsorship committee meeting at the REC Center discussing the naming rights portion of the joint operating agreement. It will be from 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM. I wanted to thank Councilman Lamb and Colossar for volunteering for the committee. Our Spring/Summer brochure is now available online at www.madinarec.org, and a copy will be inserted in the Saturday's Post newspaper. The Medina REC wants to remind the community that we also have a Just Kids Stuff Garage Sale this Saturday, April 16th, from 9:00 AM to noon. Admission is from 9:00 to 10:00 AM is $5, and then from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM is $1. And the next REC Advisory Committee meeting is Thursday, April 21st, at 7:30 AM at the REC, and I would also like to congratulate Matt on his new position. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Worley, the Parks and Recreation Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to let the public know that April 23rd and 24th is the Medina Youth Lacrosse Association Bagatoway Lacrosse Festival. It's one of the largest youth lacrosse tournaments in the Midwest, and there'll be approximately 150 teams visiting Medina over that weekend. Majority of the games will be played at Huffman, Cunningham, Bill Dunn Field, Claggett Middle School, Medina High School, and the MCRC, so plan for your travels accordingly the weekend of the 23rd. And then I also want to congratulate Matt. It's been a pleasure working with you the past two years. Thanks.
Mr. Patton, City Engineer?
Thank you. Just a general note about our three big reconstruction projects, Bronson, Huntington, and Ryan. We expect them all to, as the weather gets better here near the end, mid and end of April, to start heavy into their pavement removal phase. Excuse me. We will be notifying all the residents and businesses within those projects' zones through mail when we know the schedule, but be prepared, it's, we've been told it's going to start the next couple of weeks. Also wanted to say congratulations to Matt. I thought he did a great job, and we'll miss him.
Thank you. Mr. Pacoli, Service Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tomorrow night, Medina City will be hosting the Joint City Meeting with Wadsworth Council, Brunswick, and Medina Council as the recycling discussions continue. So, we're hopeful with discussions tomorrow evening, we can have a recommendation or at least a better direction, and we've talked about it long enough and think it's time to move forward in some direction. Matt, it was good working with you. Even though sometimes I'd see your number come across my phone, I'd cringe because I'd, you know that. I'm just kidding. Actually, we got a lot of good work done, and good luck to you in your endeavors. Thanks.
Thank you. Notices, Communications, and Petitions, there are none unfinished business. There's none introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the Chair, and a reasonable timeline of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the Chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? None, okay. Introduction and Considerations of Ordinances and Resolutions. Resolution 4716, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of funds donated to the GoFundMe campaign set up by Raymond Petro to construct a Medina Trail Skills Park at the Huffman Park Trailhead. Moved to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Worley?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Medina Trails GoFundMe campaign has raised approximately $6,000 from over 100 individuals during the last month and a half. This campaign was started by Medina Trails volunteer Raymond Petro. He has experience and expertise in building mountain bike skills parks designed for children to learn on, average riders to sharpen their skills, and experts to warm up. The funds from this campaign will be used to purchase all the materials for the project, and the remaining funds will go towards trail maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on a resolution?
Colossar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Resolution 47-16 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 48-16, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with USI Insurance Services LLC for the city's property and general liability insurance for the period of April 1st, 2016, through March 31st, 2017. Moved to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The Emergence Clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes the Emergency Clause?
Is there discussion on the Emergency Clause and/or the ordinance? Mr. Huber?
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance authorizes the mayor to enter into agreement with the property and liability insurance company that has insured us for the last four to five years. Our claims history has been very conservative, so the premiums have been good. The Emergency Clause is requested by reason of the fact that the insurance we have ends March 31st, and we need to enter into a new agreement.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the ordinance and/or the Emergency Clause? Will the clerk please call the roll on the Emergency Clause?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colossar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colossar.
Yes.
Ordinance 48-16 passes 7-0.
And Resolution 4916, a resolution commending Matt Weiderhold for the outstanding service to the city of Medina. Moved to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?[1362.83]
I'll start off. Matt, just want to say thank you. I mean, I've been on council almost 12 years, and when you came aboard, I knew you were going to be a large impact to the uptown area and all our investment we wanted to make with the square, and I couldn't even think of a better person to, to carry the reins and, you know, control all the positive impact we've had up on the square. I mean, there's one thing for council up here to throw money at it and others to throw money at it, but you made it happen, and I appreciate all your hard work, and it, I'm sure you can walk around the square proud to see all the positive things that have come out of all your hard work. So thank you very much, and I wish you the best of luck.
Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Matt, I want to echo Mark's feelings there. Mr. Wright, I'd like to thank you for having the foresight to help encourage Matt to, to become the leader of Main Street for, for the tenure that you've had here, and I'm not going to belong this, but you've made so many accomplishments, positive accomplishments in Medina. I know this, this body could never thank you enough for the things that you've got started and encouraged the business owners in Medina to participate, and you'll be sorely missed and hopefully, I'm glad that, two things. I'm glad that you're going to help bring somebody new in, and they're going to have some big shoes to fill. The second thing, I'm glad you're still going to be a resident of the city of Medina. Good luck to your, your new job. Thank you.
Mr. Hilberg?
Thank you, Mr. President. Matt, thanks for your efforts to improve things on the square. I won't belabor it. Thank you. Congratulations on your new position.
Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. Matt, I'm not going to echo, or I do echo everything that they say, but I'm not going to repeat it. I won't repeat it, but I do echo it. But just a testament to the work you have is, over the years, as we attend the affairs on, on the square, I talk to people who are coming in. Invariably, I talk to somebody who was on their way from point A to point B and made it a point to stop at Medina to attend one of the things that you organized. And it's, it's because of your efforts that bring people to the square specifically for that that we will always be thankful for, for your, your hard work and the work of everybody who worked with you. So thank you. You will be missed, and glad you're staying.
Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Matt. We really appreciate everything you've done. You were the right person at the right time that just took the square and everything about Medina to a whole nother level, so we're thankful for that, appreciate that, and I'm glad you're staying in Medina, and even more glad you're staying in Ward 4, so thank you.
Mr. Lamb?
Thank you. You know, Matt, you did the things, I guess you could sum up best, that you did the things that, that just couldn't be done. You know, everybody contributed to a lot of things prior to you, but you really put things together with Main Street that, that just never could be done, and, and you were able to do them. And if you look at the, the building and the rebuilding and the, and the repairing and the restoring of this city for almost 200 years, you, you can leave here now and absolutely know that you have been both an amazing and a wonderful part of the success of this community. And all I can say is I am also glad you're staying here, and God bless you, and, and all the best to you in, in your new endeavor.
Thank you. Matt, I echo everybody's comments, but I just have two words that I are near dear to my heart.
More lights.
Holiday lighting. I know, I know Mr. Pacoli likes those two words. He, he writes them down every day, but you've done a great job, and I think the, the city's better off because of you, and you'll be sorely missed, but hopefully you'll be involved in different activities throughout the community while you live here. So if you'd please come up front, I'd like to read a resolution before we vote. Okay. Resolution number 4916, a resolution commending Matt Weiderhold for the outstanding service to the city of Medina. Whereas Matt Weiderhold has been a powerful influence for the good and growth and progress of our community, and he has earned the admiration and high regard of those with whom he has come into contact and the affection of his fellow public servants. And whereas his performance of the duties and responsibilities as Executive Director of Main Street Medina has significantly increased the number of events downtown, thereby vastly increased the number of visitors and economic impact to community as a whole. Now therefore, be it resolved that the council of the city of Medina, Ohio, that, section one, that City Medina Council, the Medina City Council, along with the mayor and administration, extend our heartfelt appreciation and sincere thanks to Matt Weiderhold for his valuable service and dedication to the citizens in our community. Section two, that the signed copy of this resolution shall be presented to Matt Weiderhold in recognition of his achievements. Section three, that the resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest period allowed by law. We appreciate all your efforts, and do I have a motion? Moved to approve?
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Resolution 49-16 passes 7-0.
Matt, congratulations. Any words of wisdom?
Thank you. I don't know if there are words of wisdom, but I am incredibly humbled by this honor and working with the city and all of our, our partners here from Main Street Medina. It's been an incredible eight years. You took a big chance hiring kind of a smart mouth kid from the city to come down and work with you to build the city back up to what it always has been, so thank you very much for that opportunity. And certainly, the administration and council, your support has been immeasurably, just more valuable than you can ever know. So many communities across the state and the country are very jealous of what we have here in the city and the support we get from the mayor's office down through the service department and everyone. So thank you so much for your help in helping us make the goals and make it a better place and more lights.
I agree with you. Thanks a lot.
Mr. President?
Mr. Colossar?
I have an announcement and one comment. First off, City Medina is going to have on April 23rd, which is a Saturday, we're going to hold an Earth Day event over at San Massey Parking Lot is the meeting place, actually, at San Massey Park off of Gates Mills Boulevard. That's from 9:00 AM to 12:00. And we are going to plant some trees over at San Massey in an area where we just talked about in our finance department, finance meeting. We're allowing a section, almost an acre of property to regrow, hopefully someday back to its natural state, but we're going to be planting some trees over there. And then also walking over to the Q and Todd property, which is located at the end of Simon Lane, and establishing a wildflower area to help promote not only the return of the monarch butterfly to our community, but also to try to keep the bee population healthy and to hopefully start off of more, more items in the future to promote wildflower areas for, for insects and especially the two I just mentioned. And lastly, Justin, I appreciate you coming here and standing up in front of everybody and telling everybody your story. It means a lot. I took part last year in your, your walk, and it's, it's humbling to, to be around mentors like you have, and I thank all the adults up there that are willing to take time to impact a child's life, and thank you for stepping up, and I'm sure the kids around you that have dealt with your same issues appreciate you, appreciate you coming forward and being a man and explaining to everybody what you've dealt with and trying to help others, so thank you very much.
Mr. Simpson?
I'd like to echo what Mark said about Justin. Justin, only other thing I can say is I'm proud of you. I'm proud of the adults that have taken you under their wing and are guiding you to a more happy and positive life. Good luck to you, and I support your walk. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Rose?
Okay, I too would like to pass on my congratulations to Justin. Keep up the good work. It's because of people like you who carry that message forward, help others grow, and that's, that's the best you can do, is pay it forward, help others grow, and don't let it drag you down. And I also do have a, an announcement on the 16th of April, from 10:00 to 2:00, there's going to be a group of residents from Ward 1 cleaning up the area around Hillview Way. Though I understand there's going to be some refreshments along with the hard work, so the, and there'll be people providing some work tools and things like that, so if you want to gather around Hillview Way around 10:00 AM, get out there and help clean up that area. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple comments, and again, Justin, or better call you Snake. I think that's more appropriate. We do appreciate your comments, and I think everybody echoes the, the importance of what your message was to the community. I also like to bring up again, we have a three-city meeting tomorrow that Mr. Pacoli talked about, about recycling for the county and the three cities. I think it's time that the, everybody discuss with the, through the MC18, the three service directors, the information they obtained, disseminate it amongst the various cities, the three cities, and come to a recommendation or conclusion about where we want our recycling to head in the future, whether it be curbside recycling, whether it be through a waste mall or otherwise. But I guess everybody that's going to be around the table and everybody in the community recognizes that we do have to do more recycling in our community, and whatever that is, at the, the lowest cost and the highest rate, I think everybody should and probably would support that kind of concept. And secondly, on April 20th, we have our first budget meeting at 5:30, and that's Wednesday. Those are always exciting times, and we hope that there's a good turnout to discuss it, but that'll be our first budget meeting of the year to discuss sanitation and water. With that said, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you.[1785.47]